Invite Professor Wang to host this session.
Okay, thank you. So first, I think we have received one question from the floor that I can answer. And let me first read the question. We have only received two questions so far, so I mean that I can answer one of them. This question addresses the following issue: There are many non-tenure-track applicants who are in their early career. However, they are not eligible in applying the ECS but have to compete with other applicants in the GRF stream. Is there any safety net discretion given to this group of applicants? Now, actually, when we talk about non-tenure-track, there can be senior academics. Non-tenure-track is not equivalent to junior faculty members. There can be very senior faculty members who are on contract and they are not on tenure track. So in fact, from the website, from the RGC website, in the old days, we have what are called the "green" applications. Those are the proposals printed on green paper. And those are defined as two-year, people who are within the two years of full-time pay appointment to their first substantive position equivalent to the staff grade, which professor's grade, to staff grade I, which is assistant lecturer grade in any local or overseas university at a time of submission. However, since we have changed to the ECS, the ECS actually applies to all eligible applicants who are tenure-track, new junior faculty members at the assistant professor or career equivalent level who have three or less years of experience in the academia. So therefore, in a way that we do not actually have anything specifically for non-tenure-track faculty members because it is hard to define whether those are junior or senior faculty members. So this is the answer to that question. So I think we have another question from... Is there a second question? Yeah, you can answer that, yeah.
Thank you, Professor Wang. This question also came from the floor. Actually, there are three questions. Let me take them one by one to rephrase the question. "I'm a senior lecturer teaching law in the business faculty. Can I submit proposals in both the business studies area as well as in the humanities and social sciences area under the subtopic of law? So are there any restrictions on my application for either GRF, ECS, or HSS, PFS regarding such kinds of legal proposals that cover multiple areas of interest?" In general, it is the responsibility of the applicant to specify which subject panel this proposal should go to. So that's entirely the choice of the applicant. There are no restrictions on which subject panel to submit it to based solely on your current title or your background. It just has to do with the content of the research proposal. So I don't think there is any exclusion on submitting it to either business studies or humanities and social sciences. It's just up to the specific research question that's being tackled in the project. The second question is, "As a senior lecturer, I noticed that I might not be eligible to apply for GRF ECS. I'd like to confirm whether I can apply for any of these funds, GRF, ECS, HSS, PFS, as a senior lecturer. If not, are there any suggestions for me to get access to these schemes?" As far as I'm aware, there are no restrictions for somebody with the title of a senior lecturer to apply for GRF ECS funding. I suggest the safest option would be to raise this question with the members of the secretariat who might be more capable than I am of providing a definite answer to that question. The third question is, "If I submit a proposal on law and accounting, which represents interdisciplinary research to apply for GRF ECS, will my proposal be assessed in the business studies panel only or will some experts in law and business join together to assess my proposal?" If you choose to submit in law, a proposal on law and accounting to the business studies panel, those are actually well-known and well-regarded, well-established areas of work within business studies. So we already have some expertise in the panel with respect to that specific area of research. So I'm highly confident that this proposal will get scrutinized by people with expertise in both law and accounting and business studies. Again, it's the choice of the applicant to specify where the meat of the research topic lies in terms of choosing which panel to submit to.
Okay, so in fact, we have received some questions from the institutions before this meeting. And so however, I think that because I'm looking at the time, it is already 7:35. We have been here for two and a half hours already. So if you don't have any questions, we can go through those questions submitted from the institutions before this forum. But let me give the opportunity to the floor first to see whether you have any questions beyond those two that we have already addressed. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and then we will pass you a microphone to for you to address the panel. Yes, we have one question here.
This is a simple clarification question. So if an applicant submits names of reviewers not on their RGC list, will the GRF proposal be sent to these unlisted experts?
I think the reviewers, it's not, I mean, the reviewer database is not exclusive. We don't always pick from the reviewer database. The readers can actually add names to the database. So depending on the expertise of the reviewer, new names can always be added. So to answer to your question is that it's not, it is not necessary that we only pick reviewers from that database. Any other questions? Yes, we have one in the back.
I also have a question about the external reviewer. What do you do with reviewers that are, in some sense, bad reviewers? Meaning, they only give one line comment or they don't even show any understanding of the topic. What do you do with these reviewers?
Okay, I think that we, I can answer that, and then I'll let the other panel members also address that. This, we don't know ahead of time if they are bad reviewers because only after once that we discover that they are not responsible, only submit one-liners. In that case, we would blacklist them in the database. And in the future, when whoever, readers or panel members come in and look at that, they are not going to select the same review again. So I think that that's the answer that we have.
We have actually asked the reviewer to declare themselves as expert or somewhat familiar or not an expert at all. So they have a choice of not to reveal or just to say that "I'm not familiar" and return the proposal back to us rather than to give one-liners. So if they're coming in and they are expert and then just write very briefly, and that would be the reason that they would be backlisted.
All right, next question, yes, here, one question here. Use a mic because we want everybody to hear your question.
So it's also related to this interdisciplinary work. If the same proposal submitted to a different subject panel, is it considered a resubmission or a new submission?
Okay, so let me ask the... Resubmission? Oh, okay.
It would be considered a resubmission if you submit to a different panel. But notice that even if you specify which panel it'll go to, the panel chairs can swap proposals. So it belongs to clearly a different discipline. It may in fact go back to the same panel. But if you submit it twice to RGC, it doesn't matter which scheme or which panel you suggest the first time. It's a resubmission, and you have to declare that.
Okay, next question. Okay, here, we have one.
Okay, so to follow up on the reviewer selection question, so how do you create the blacklist? What if I know someone who has a questionable moral character, who may steal ideas? So, but I don't really have the hard evidence to show that, but this person has the reputation. How do you do that?
We cannot just take your word. Actually, it would be up to the panel members and the readers to decide. That is, like, we don't take suggestions that a particular reviewer has a bad moral character, and then we would enter that into our database. So that would be something that we won't do. So we would, because the reviewers are actually, I mean, the panel members are very experienced researchers in the field. And we have over like 300 panel members. They, if you know that there's someone who has a bad moral character, then most likely, that would also be known to the panel members.
You have the opportunity to request omitting certain reviewers from your particular proposal without stating any reasons. So if you are worried about someone, you can state that "Do not send this out to a certain person" for whatever reason, but you don't need to state a reason.
Okay, any further questions? Yes, we have one in the back.
Still about the bad reviewers. Yeah, because my own experience, I have five reviewers commenting on my last proposal. And for example, four of them putting quite positive comments, and then one give very low rating without any, you know, specific comments, just saying, "Well, this proposal is not interesting." So I think it's good to learn that there's a system to blacklist this kind of reviewer. But I think people may also like to know how this kind of rating will be counted by the panelists when they make their final judgment. Thanks.
Let me speak in general to that. I think the process is, in the panel, the panel members do not exclusively look at the reviewers' comments because that is why there is a panel, to discuss the comments, to make sure that the, all the inputs are taken into account in the deliberations. So in fact, the first reader is going to lead the discussion, followed by input from the second reader. Then other members in the panel, who actually are in the panel, would also participate in discussing the panel. In some extreme cases, there may be some onsite review, or at least one panel member would take some time to read the proposal again in case that they cannot reach some decision immediately. So this is, there's a very elaborate process in understanding the comments submitted from the reviewers and to make the best decision to each proposal.
Just to supplement what Professor Wang has said, there are checks and balances because no one single bad reviewer can sabotage or destroy a proposal. That is, a proposal is read by at least two external reviewers, sometimes up to five, in addition to two panel members. The panel members read the proposal usually without first looking at the scores of the external reviewers or at least not looking at the comments. So you have at least a minimum of four independent judgments. And then all of this is tabulated and brought to the particular panel in question. Whether, let's say, in the H panel, it would be one of the sub panels in which there are anything from between eight to maybe 12, 14, 15 panel members who also participate in the case. So whenever there is a great disparity of scores, for example, let's say, several fours or fives and then one very negative ones, these are always flagged and always the written comments are looked at by everyone to see whether they are reasonable. So I think you can be reassured that there is no arbitrariness. Or the system is designed in such a way that I am confident that any kind of personnel arbitrariness would not creep into the system to undermine any successful, good application.
Yeah, I'd like to also add that among the two readers, the first reader and the second reader, they also score independently the proposal. After looking at the proposal and the review, they come in with a score, which is not known to the other reader. Okay, and then if there is a discrepancy more than certain among, actually, the whole panel will look at the proposal. So as an additional safeguard.
I think I was given also a suggestion this morning by another committee member saying that this panel operation is more like a mystery to people. And so I think something that in the future, what we may do is to at least make this more transparent and open, tell all the institutions how we are doing it, and then let the institutions, I mean, brief the applicants in terms of the panel operations and the review process.
Just gonna add to this because there are several questions about bad reviewers. So I think it's important to put this to rest to some extent. When you have, such as in your case, you said four out of five good ones and then one clearly different. The two readers, particularly the primary reader, almost always will have to explain to the rest of the panel whether that bad score is justified or not. Because it could be that that one person is actually correct, right? I mean, there's always this possibility, actually, four people were wrong, and one person was right. Regardless, that because of the disparity, the panel member, the reader, or sometimes both readers, have to explain to the rest of the panel what they think that is due to. Because if it turns out to be an erroneous judgment by that one particular individual, the reader will say, "I've looked at it, and this guy is off because he forgot to look at certain things, and he also, his information is incorrect and whatnot." And actually, that usually is discussed quite a bit. And if it so happened that the two readers do not know this area as intimately as they should, they will, more often than not, ask another panelist to take a look at that bad score and say, "You know, what's going on here? Can you give me some help here?" So I think I can assure you that an outlying score, such as what you just said, will never go unnoticed and uncommented or unevaluated.
So at this point, I think that there is, this is a relevant question because I think the committee has actually, or the panel has actually explained to you the process in the panel. And therefore, I'd like to answer a question raised by the institution, whether you can do an appeal. That is, in the worst case, that you have received reviewers' comments that you are not happy with. Can you appeal the decision? So the answer is that RGC would accept appeal on procedural ground. That is, if there is anything wrong with the procedure, then you can appeal the decision. However, we don't have appeal on the subject discussion, on the subject decision because this is, this decision has been reached with a due process, with very elaborate discussions of many parties involved. So therefore, the decision at that point would be final. We would only entertain appeals on a procedural ground. So let me see, any further questions? Yes?
I have just get ECS and applied GRF. For these two times, I always have one question struggling to me. It is better to submit a proposal that is such as create something new to sit on or using new method to create a traditional chair.
Okay, so I think let me ask one of the, any panel member want to address that?
What is your area?
Engineering, computer science.
So I tried to understand your concern.
The question is that, such as, for example, to create something new to sit on or use some novel method to create a traditional chair, such as.
Okay, so I would make this analogy this way. ECS is equivalent to something like career award in United States with the intention that if you are without constraint, will you daring to propose your next 10 years research plan?
I have got ECS and applied GRF. So before I submitted ECS, I have a question to myself. I wanted to propose a new method to create some traditional one, meta, or create a new, totally new thing. So this is, every time I have, because I can just submit one, right?
Well, you have two years to submit ECS.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And you have even time to submit GRF.
Yes.
So I do not really understand the question.
The question is that for the proposal, there is two kinds of proposal.
Yes.
One kind is that I use some new method to create something, something existing, such as a new method to create a traditional chair. Or the second one is that I use, create something new for sitting on. That is, something that never, never see before, but I can create something that I can sit on, but it is not a chair.
But are you asking which proposal you'd like to submit to, which format?
Well, which one is more preferred by RGC?
Well, I cannot answer that question for the reviewers, but I will just give you a general perception that I have for ECS versus GRF. Is ECS eligible for people who are within a certain time of the graduation of company institute? So this is a very short-time fields. Okay, that fend off all the other established researchers from competing with you. So in that regard, you actually have a better advantage. You should be daring to propose something that you feel that should have a higher chance of being funded. Compared to GRF, you are going to compete with seasoned researcher that can produce a much more sophisticated write-up for the proposal and so on. And I would base on that rather than the idea yourself.
Let me try to also answer that. I think that this is actually trying to identify the difference between evolutionary and revolutionary research. I think there are merits of both. I think one thing that was said in today is that when you do something, when you do your research, regardless of what you're doing, creating a new chair, creating a new method, whether this would create any excitement in the community, whether anybody would try to follow what you're doing, is that something new? I mean that you have to ask, is there something new? Not just the new system, new algorithm, whatever, new method, but is there anything new? Would it create excitement in the community? That is the thing that you have to answer yourself because it depends on the area. We cannot answer in general which one is RGC preferring. Do we prefer a new chair or a new method? We don't know. Some areas do prefer new methods, some area prefer new ideas, so we cannot say in general. But I think in those cases, there are successes in both cases. Okay.
In the presentation earlier from the business and the H panel members, successful applicants before, there was the idea that one should play it safe in using topics that you already publish on. I can understand that point of view because there is always a great pressure from the institution to apply and to succeed. However, I think from the perspective of the panel and the evaluators, I think what really is important is the excitement of ideas, the quality of the proposal. And the quality of proposal has nothing to do with how long you have been working on the project. Now, sometimes you can say a new project can stimulate a great deal of excitement. And the panel members, they don't usually go and see how many articles you publish on this particular subject. Sometimes you have all the advantages if you want to build a new chair to sit on because it could be a revolutionary design and then you can have a wonderful, long-term project. I think you need to make that decision yourself in terms of the career project and not always think about institutional pressure to get a GRF every single year. Except the fact that maybe a new design may not be funded the first year because the design still has flaws. But you should have confidence in your own intellectual creativity and originality in reapplying and resubmitting, and then, you know, eventually, a better chair would be built.
I actually have something added in view of what is from the institution. I actually, from my own institution, I happen to advise a junior faculty, a assistant professor just arrived in one year, and he asked me whether he can apply for a multi-university research initiative, which is similar to a theme-based research here. So the answer to that is, it's possible. It's not possible, you know, the junior faculty cannot be collaborating with several collaborator from different universities to apply. So it's a confidence level. And to my surprise, actually, this PI end up getting the award, which is very unusual, but it does shows that the rule is not made to fail people. There's always a case to be made, is looking at the criteria of the judge of the proposal and then decide whether this is, regardless whether this is the right discipline for the PI. Maybe the PI is a different discipline, this is the question from institute. But looking at the intellectual merit and looking at as intellectual properties of the group or proposal from this particular team to make that judgment.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I also want to advise everybody that for junior researchers, getting mentoring is important because like, talk to the senior mentors, they may be able to help you to identify things, directions that you may not be able to see immediately. But even for seasoned researchers, for people who are already in the field for many years, getting a friend to read your proposal is always good because there are blind spots. You have been working on something for a long time, and there are blind spots that you may not be able to spot immediately. And you don't want the reviewer to spot that and turn down your proposal. So it's always good to get a friend to read your proposal before you submit it. This is an advice that is important. Yes, any further comments? Yeah, okay, we have, oh, there are many. Okay, one at the back first, okay? And then the lady in the front, and then the person over on the left-hand side.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question about resubmission. Indeed, several times when I talk with my colleague or even senior colleagues, they advise me not to do a resubmission. In particular, I'm usually submit to a physical science panel. The experiment told me that, well, these kinds of rumors saying that it never gets us if you do a resubmission in at least physical science panel. So I just want to know whether it's really the fact or these kinds of rumor, that is the first question. And another question is also about resubmission. Indeed, it's more technical. Because in the application, there's a question about whether this proposal is a resubmission or largely similar proposal. What's the difference between the kinds of resubmission or largely similar proposal? So at least from the view from panel members or chairman.
Whether you should resubmit or not, it's, I think it's a myth to say that resubmissions are generally not biased. That's my experience within the panel. But unfortunately, most people do not make many changes when they resubmit, and therefore, those would definitely have no chance. So those are the cases that you would say that resubmission is a bad idea. If you don't have major things to contribute in a new way, new explanations, new experts, new studies, and so forth, or new ideas, then you should not resubmit because you are not, it's not a matter of luck. The proposal or that idea has some flaws in it previously. But if you really seriously think that the first round of review, there are some misconceptions by the readers or reviewers on your ideas, then if you clearly explain those, it will have a good chance of being raised in terms of scores. And as far as what is, what is resubmission because it's largely similar or identical, that's really hard to say. It basically depends on the person reading it. But if you think it's largely similar, then I would say that you should not... But if you think it's largely similar, then I would say that you should not resubmit, because if it's largely similar, it will get largely similar scores.
I think, I think for resubmission, just a word of advice, certainly don't put in a largely similar application. And when you put in a resubmission, take time and collect all the salient points indicated by the previous reviewers, summarize them and provide an answer, right? You can add another page if you want and say the previous reviewers had the following question. These are my answers. And you can even point to whatever page number and whatever way you put them in italics or in quotations or whatever you want, bold them, the font. That will earn you a lot of credit with the next set of reviewers. They will say, wow, this fellow is very conscientious. He took everything seriously and he's making corrections that are appropriate. So that will earn you a lot of sympathy.
Okay, the lady in the front, yes?
I'm in the field of HSS. In the proposal, we need to write the impact of our proposal. May I ask whether the panel prefer proposals with more theoretical contribution or those with more practical contribution? It really needs to, the difference in writing the research method and methodology parts. Thank you.
There used to be a public policy component to this and it still has been folded into the H panel. So it really very much depends on the particular subject matter. There are obviously certain subjects, for example, education or psychology or different things which have a practical application. There are other subjects such as, I suppose, literature or philosophy which may have less. I really think we don't have any preference at all. We just want good proposals. It can be applied, it could be more theoretical.
Okay, any person on the left-hand side?
Just got some comment about, because in the UK, when we submit a proposal to the EPSRC, normally, actually, when the panel make the decision, the applicant get a chance to receive the comment. And then they will, they will given probably three days to respond to comment from the reviewers. And then that piece of paper will feedback to the panel. Then that particular mechanism get you the chance to get direct feedback to the comment first before putting the next round for the resubmission. Is it possible that we can make these particular things happen? Second point, I think probably in Hong Kong, every November by the end of October, we're very gear for this particular submission. But in the UK, in the UK, we've got a chance that actually we can submit the proposal probably all year round and the panel meet maybe every three months, if I recall. So you see any chance that in Hong Kong, we can get a chance to have a bit more opportunity to submit the proposal? Thank you.
Actually, both are very good ideas. In fact, we are now in the process of conducting a review of the operations of RGC, looking at the proposals, the processing cycle, the submission. I think to address the second question is, it is really the constraint on the resources that we have. I think the GRF and the ECS panel met once, because we have to invite so many external panel members to come in. And in fact, June is a good time, because it is a summer time for many of those overseas panel members. If we have meetings every three months, I don't think there will be so many volunteers who want to come to Hong Kong every three months. So that's a logistical difficulty of doing that. I think for the first suggestion of having feedbacks is a good suggestion. In fact, this would allow the more informative, I mean, information to be made available to the readers in making the final decision. I think that we would take that into consideration in the future, at this point when we are doing the review for the RGC's operations. Any further comments? Okay, we have one there, okay. Okay, I think that we are running late, so let's have the last question at this point, okay? Because I see that we have been here for the three, last three hours. Yes?
Just want to share with you guys my, the experience of not getting a GRF last cycle. So first of all, I got four reviewers and the three of them were pretty good. One reviewer was a bad reviewer, I suppose. I won't label that person as bad, it's just a difference in opinion, how about that? Okay, so if I were to, you know, I think he has a certain, he held a certain fundamental difference, a different viewpoint to a certain, for a certain niche point in the field, that it could not be easily refuted, okay? Even if I would do the resubmission, it would prove difficult anyway. But anyway, so I talked to some seniors and they said that, oh, four reviewers is pretty good already. Let's say you have seven or eight reviewers, if only one person shoot you down, you still fail. Can you verify this claim? That, you know, the higher the number of reviewers end up reviewing the proposal, the likelihood you get in funding is lower.
Okay, so let me ask the, some of the panel chairs to address that. Anyone want to address that?
Okay, you have the mic over there. So the, so the answer to your very last question is no. The number of reviewers has nothing to do, well, let's just present, no direct correlation to the outcome, all right? Obviously, if you have a large number of very bad reviews, then the chances are not so good. As I said before, any review that comes in with an opinion that is quote unquote outlier opinion will be looked, will be looked at. Now, of course, that individual could be the person who has the longest, the most elaborate and justified review, which is so convincing that the panelists believe that that is the most valid evaluation, right? That can be the case. On the other hand, if it's a review comes in, not so, not so good score, let's not go with what number that is, but, and it's one-liners all the way. Well, this, that particular review basically will be discounted for both the fact it's an outlier and secondly, it's not substantiated.
All right, thanks, Dr. Tuan. I guess I just want to refer to your point, because when I saw the comments from the local panel members, if I could refer them to be, I feel that they have only taken into account of the outlier comment, without actually referring to the whole picture. They would only charge all their criticisms based off that one report that was negative and then without referring to the other three better reports. So I, that just, you know, this is really my second time doing this, I'm not very, I'm still very new to the process.
Sure.
I just, you know, hope that you guys could give some public confidence that, okay, you really take this seriously, you really carefully consider every single reviewer coming in, you really have the local board members who are very comprehensive undertaking of this, you know, of all the external reviewers, because I can only see the balance, you know, the overall comments from one reviewer that the local people have written.
When you, when you say local, you mean the panel?
Panel members, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, not local as in Hong Kong.
Panel members, yeah.
So that would mean, in that very instance, that the readers, the two people who are at the panel meeting, were more convinced by the not terribly good reviewer, for whatever reason. And they also made the rest of the panel, they convinced the rest of the panel to go along with them. So I, again, without knowing the specifics, which I don't really, shouldn't know or need to know, that would be my, my assessment of what happened. But that would be the result of a deliberate process as opposed to an arbitrary decision.
Okay, that's good, because I could only see the final written output. I didn't know deliberation. I could only see that the negative comments are being reflected at the local report. That's why, hence my question. My really, really last question is the following. So without, because you have pointed out that the appeal could be made on a procedural ground, right? I just want to clarify what that exactly that means. So let's say I really think that the bad comment or bad reviewer or whatnot, really, you know, the bad reviewer comment was made and that, to me, is some kind of procedural injustice, okay? That I urge, I stood this urge to really file a comment, to file complaint. And could that be on, you know, that's why I want to see what exactly does it mean by procedural ground? But because we don't know how your process actually works, right? We just know that we submit the proposal in November and I got better result in June. I had no idea where it really went on. So I don't know how to make that claim, or make that, file the complaint.
Well, on a procedural ground, for example, like if there are no review reports received, that obviously is a procedural error, that is, we cannot make a decision without any, any comments. So example, so the subject of, the content of the review is very subjective, meaning that like whether you like the comments or not, they are very subjective. We can only go through a process to safeguard, to make sure that all the comments have been taken into account with the best knowledge that the panel members and the readers have at the time of the decision. So therefore, we want to ensure that the process is fair and we reach a decision after sufficient, after actually elaborate discussions and understanding of the comments based on the expertise of the panel members. There are always, I mean, places to improve, but the procedural ground is that we want to ensure that all the proposals are processed according to the specified procedure. If there are procedural irregularity in the case, for example, like suppose that at the end, in reviewing a proposal, we discover in the, at the end that, that there's a conflict of interest with some readers, that would be considered a procedure irregularity. And in that case, whether you know it or not, whether you appeal or not, we will try to fix the problem and on our end. So we adhere to the procedure to make sure that it is fair and for all the, all the academic submitting proposals. Okay, so I think that at this time, I think that we are already over three hours in this long meeting. I think that we see that there are a lot of people who are so patient to wait to the end. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming to this town hall meeting. Actually, I'd like to give you some, three takeaways to, for you to think about. In submitting a good proposal, this is really like an art, more like than a science, because it's not a scientific endeavor to write a good proposal, but more like an art. You have to develop a good research problem with good research focus to get a good methodology in solving your problem and the methodology has to be comprehensive and convincing to the reviewers and to the panel members. And lastly, don't forget about the budget. I think the budget should, is very important for you to develop a good budget, make sure that the budget is justified, you have items that you request that are justified. Don't ask for 10 students and you don't even specify how you use the students in your, in your project. So those are things that are important in writing good proposals. So I think that those are all the things that I'd like to say at this point. So before I, we go, I'd like to express my gratitude to the researchers who have shared with us their valuable experience in competing for RGC funds, to our panel chairs for their detailed explanation of the assessment procedures, and to you in particular for your participation in this event. I really hope that this town hall meeting has fulfilled its purpose and is useful for you to submit successful proposals in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Tuan.